Tonight we have the pleasure of seeing two meetings. One will be a voting meeting where we will be considering a contract and a trip. And then the second part will be a workshop where we will be discussing all that we will have on the agenda for next week's voting meeting. I would like to announce that we did need an executive session to discuss personnel. And now I would like to call on Mr. Dolan. Is that it?
Yeah.
You've signed up to make a comment? Please come forward and do so.
My name is Thomas Dolan, and I am the president of the senior class and the president of the National Honor Society in high school. I talked with the board a few months ago, and the issue I want to raise is the issue of class rank in our high school. And it's an issue that, you know, is often overlooked, but I think it does have a great impact on the overall mentality of the students at the high school. Number one, just to, you know, give, you know, my personal experiences and feelings about the class rank system that Exeter has right now. Right now, within like the top, you know, 20 and top 50 students in high school, our class rank system is really separated by decimal points, meaning it causes a high level of competition. And it also greatly affects what classes people choose. A lot of people will not take particular classes because they think that it may affect their class rank. A lot of people will only take honors classes because they want their rank to be high. And I think that overall, it just has a detrimental effect on a student's ability to, you know, expand the types of classes they take. But other than that, and, you know, besides expressing my personal feelings about class rank to the board, I did gather some information over these past few months about why, you know, class rank is actually, you know, is being seen less and less as a viable source of judging students' academic ability. And one of them is that at a statistical level, class rank is meaningless. And the reason for that is that the ordinal level of measurement used in the class ranking system only measures relative standing. But actual differences among individual rankings are meaningless because they can be different. If someone is ranked 15, someone's ranked 20, and someone's ranked 5, you know, that person ranked 15 and 5 could be closer together by GPA than the person ranked 20, even though the 15 and the 20 are closer together. You know, that's just because of the GPA gap, and that's what is happening within our high school. Other than that, it does not take into the overall class size. You know, if someone says they're number 5 in one school and 5 in another school, and if one school has 300 kids and the other school has 100 kids, that is a completely different number. And so, you know, I don't think that that is completely representative of that student. Another thing is that a lot of major colleges and universities, I know most of the Ivy Lees and most of the top schools in the country, no longer look at class rank. What they do look at is the percent that you are ranked in. If you're in the top 5%, if you're in the top 10%, you know, because that is measured as ratio, as the entire, you know, class, and it's more comparable, whereas class rank is not. So because these percents are more comparable, more colleges are using them. So that is what I would like to propose. I think that we should do away with this unneeded competition. I think we should implement breaking our students into percentages. And I've talked with a lot of high schoolers over the past couple of months and what they thought. And some of the things I've heard, you know, mostly were positive. Many students believed that class rank was something that was unnecessary, you know, it created unneeded competition among students. You know, it was ridiculous that some people would only take normal classes and get 100s across the board, but then when the people that took AP classes and were doing relatively well, well, they would be ranked, you know, number 50, and the people taking, you know, photo and getting a 100 would be ranked, you know, 11 or 10. And a lot of people think that that kind of, you know, ranking system is kind of ridiculous. So a number of things have come up to me and said, you know, I know someone said that they don't want to get rid of the class rank system because a school gives out a scholarship if he's in the top 10% of his class. And again, that's not based on class rank. You can solve that problem by giving that a percent. You don't need an official, specific class rank. And I think that, you know, overall, class ranking, I don't think it's right to just label students with a specific number that isn't totally representative of their academic ability. And I think that using the percent system, which a lot of schools around Pennsylvania and nationwide are actually going more towards, a lot of schools, I know Wilson's got rid of their class rank system, and a lot of schools are also following. So, you know, I think it's a general trend, and that's, you know, what I propose tonight.
What do you feel about the weighting, assigning a different weight to an AP course or something like that compared to standard? Do you think we should continue that?
No, yes, I think the weighting is appropriate. You know, but again, I think a lot of kids, you know, with the weighting, they kind of, I know people that have cheated the system that have, you know, haven't taken any gym classes in the past, I know that you can't do that now, or haven't taken any language class in the past, and they've just filled up on these honors classes so they can just get more honors classes, so they can get a more weight, because all they care about is getting a higher class rank. They don't care about the level of, you know, academic learning that they receive, they just care about getting to number 3 or number 2. And I am not kidding when I say this, it has been ridiculous, the kinds of things that I've heard, the level of competition that, you know, I feel like, you know, kids nowadays aren't concerned anymore with, you know, learning as much as possible. They're concerned with getting an honors class, getting that weight, and getting that rank. And I think that completely takes away the point, you know, of the whole entire class rank system. So, I mean, yes, I think the weighting is right, but, you know, I just don't think that the class rank specifically affects that, so.
You would no longer then identify a valedictorian or a salutatorian?
No, I, we still could. I mean, you know, we wouldn't tell the students, but obviously, like, at the end of senior, you know, hypothetically speaking, we, you know, we get rid of class rank, and at the end of their senior year, there would be a number 1 and 2, and then, at the end of senior year, before graduation, you tell those people. But, you know, why would they have to know before then, you know, I just...
Well, I'm not sure why we need a salutatorian or valedictorian.
I mean, if you want to get rid of the salutatorian, I mean, again, a lot of people think that I would catch a lot of flak if I said, you know, let's do away with salutatorian or valedictorian, I mean, you know...
Well, that's based on class rank, that's why...
Yes, yes.
They can be consistent with your argument to not identify the top two students.
Yes. And basically what I'm saying is, I don't want, at the end of freshman year, you can call your guidance counselor, you can ask, you know, what is my class rank? And I remember, you know, very vividly, like, when that, you know, when everyone found out their rank, everyone, you know, was talking about it, everyone was, you know, like, what's your number, what's your number, and it was ridiculous. You know, I don't think that that is appropriate. I think that you should be able to find out what percent you're in, and then at the end of senior year, you can tell number 1 and number 2, you're the valedictorian, you're the salutatorian. You know, I don't think you have to tell them freshman year, you're number 1, you're number 2, you're number, you know, 10, you're number 50. I don't think that that's necessary. You know, you could get rid of the valedictorian, salutatorian, but other schools have gotten rid of class rank but have kept those two honors. They just don't tell their students until the very end of senior year who is number 1 and who is number 2.
Is that what you recommend, is to keep the class rank but not, but keep it a secret?
Yes, I mean, you know, you will have, like, there will be a ranking. I just, you know, I don't necessarily believe that it reflects accurately, you know, a student's academic ability, and I just think it causes unnecessary competition. You know, obviously, you know, you can order students from number 1 to, you know, how many students there are in a class, but I just don't think that's, you know, really reflective of, you know, how they actually perform. So, and, you know, that being said, I don't really think that they should know because it causes this unnecessary competition that a lot of students have complained about. So, and at the end of senior year, yes, I would say that, you know, the salutatorian and the valedictorian should know the number 1 and 2, but everyone else, like, you're in the top 5% of your class, you're in the top 10%, that's what I'm proposing.
And my last question would be, how do you know who, where the students form on percentage wise if you don't give them a ranking?
Well, that would be also determining their honor GPA. It's much like a class rank system, except it's, you know, broken into groups, as you will.
So the administration would know, but they'd keep it secret from the students?
Well, I mean, again, theoretically, yes, they would, but it wouldn't really be, you know, they wouldn't be purposely withholding information. This would be the system, like, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be like, you know, the administration would look up your class rank and then not tell you. They would look up the percent you're in, you know, and only at the end of senior year would they calculate who's actually number 1 and who's number 2. Then, you know, that's what I'm saying.
I really thought you were moving toward getting rid of, comparing students to get rid of ranking percentages and the valedictorian or salutatorian based on the rankings.
If I had it my way, honestly, I would want to get rid of that competition. However, a lot of students, you know, getting rid of class rank, like, I have to explain, some students are on board with it, while others are like, wait, you know, what do you mean, I can't be number 3 anymore? And it's like, you know, I just think that's not the point. I think that a lot of students, you know, over time, I personally see that happening, is that this whole competition thing is going to go away. But right now, to completely get away with all that competition, the purpose for getting rid of the class rank system is, I think it will lessen the competition by putting it in these percentages. You know, it will be better than the class rank system that we have now, you know, the 5%, the 10%. Yes, there would still be competition, but it wouldn't be, you know, as harsh as the system that we have now, so.
I admire your stand on learning, valuing learning rather than the competitive nature of grades and ranking.
Yeah. It's, you know, it's just, it's been something that I have really, I haven't understood, you know. For an example, I, you know, my sophomore year, I took AP Bio, and, you know, I'm not going to use names, but some of the top people in my class, I remember telling, they told me, I'm not taking AP Bio because my class rank's going to drop. And I just, I was dumbfounded. I was like, you know, you're smarter than me, but you're refusing to take a class because your class, like, this would benefit you. You know, you want to be a doctor, but you don't want to take AP Bio because you're worried about your class rank? That makes no sense. And that's when I really started thinking about, like, you know, why does it matter? And especially when students would come, oh, well, I'm number 11, what are you? Oh, you're number, you know, 13? Well, I'm smarter than you. Like, okay, I mean, I don't really understand that, so that's just, you know, and that's not just my experience. That's, you know, I know someone who's number 3 in their class, and they're constantly, constantly being compared with, you know, number 1 and 2, and she hates it. And she hates that competition. She wants to get rid of it, she wants to get rid of that tension so much because she can't stand it, so, you know...
Are there any other questions from Mr. Dolan?
Yeah, Tom, when you, I know you mentioned Wilson moved away, but when you were researching this, did you find, did you find a model out there that you think would be the ideal situation?
Well, I think the model that Wilson went with was the graduating with honors, like, magna cum laude, cum laude, but again, that was based on percentage, percentages. If you were like in the top 5%, you graduated magna cum laude, and the top 10%, you graduated cum laude. So it would pretty much be what, you know, percentage was, so...
Well, would we base those levels of distinction on the grade point average rather than the ranking?
Yes, you could also base them on the grade point average. You know, for me to decide specific cutoffs, you know, I did not do that now, and I think that the board would probably be better off deciding specific cutoff points for, you know, if you would graduate, you know, with honors or, you know, without honors. But, you know, that system I've heard has worked, the percentage system has worked. I just, you know, but the common trend among high schools is that they're doing away with the class rank system, but they are keeping the salutatorian and valedictorian. What they're doing is they're just telling, you know, at the end of senior year, they will tell them, you're the valedictorian, you're the salutatorian. But they're not doing that freshman year, you know, which is what we're doing now, so...
Would it be possible to introduce some other criteria to determine the salutatorian and valedictorian?
Yeah, I mean, I have heard of, you know, you have to take a specific number of honors classes and, you know, a specific number of, you know, AP classes, and community service, or, you know, yeah, your extracurriculars. But again, I think, you know, I have more information that I can email the board members if they wish to, you know, read some of the stuff that I have read. I don't have, you know, a lot of extensive copies with me right now, I just have my notes. But I can email board members about the things that I've read. But yes, there have been some systems that have worked on that. And again, you know, it would be probably up to the board to decide the criteria for that, but yes.
Has this been discussed at the student forum?
No, it has not. I am not a member of the student forum.
It has come up from time to time at student forum.
Yeah.
In fact, it has come up some times over the last 10 years. There have been some very compelling, very passionate testimonies about what this pressure can do and how people work very hard to manipulate the system in a manner, and you know what, some people have gotten extremely good at manipulating the system. They know how it works, and they are extremely diligent about working in that.
Mr. Dolan, we appreciate you bringing this forward because we, yes, yes.
So, just to clarify, you're saying that you would divide up the percentages based on your GPA? So if you had 40 kids with a GPA of 4, then would they all be in the same group?
Um, you don't have to make me, you know, thank you for this. Again, I, you know, if you want to read up more, like, on the actual, you know, articles that I have read, and the statistics, and, you know, kind of the different systems, you know, I can email you off the top of my head, I can't say for certain. But I think it's not more of like a, it's not ranked on a 4.0 GPA, I know that, it's more ranked on a GPA of 10 and serious. So, you know, again, it'd be like, you know, if I had like a 97.8, and if, like, someone had a 96 point, you know, because I don't think, our high school doesn't do 4.0 GPAs. So, but, you know, again, I think that, it would be, you can say the same thing about class rank, that, you know, if everyone had the same grade, you know, what would rank people? But, and my whole thing is that it's easier to group people in these groups, and it's easier to compare them with other high schools, that colleges, and colleges know this, it's easier to compare them if it's based on a percent rather than a specific number.
I would appreciate your presentation.
Yes, yeah.
There's email addresses on the website, if you want to send it to me, I'll send it to everybody or anyone. But I appreciate you bringing this up. You've been dancing around this issue for the past few months. If I said I would be astonished if anything happened this year, it would be an understatement. But I think you've provided valuable insight that we can use in our deliberations, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd just like to say something. I think this idea of getting competition out of it and having more collaborative efforts among the students is a much better way to go. I think we are trying in our district to work collaboratively, you know, teachers with teachers, and I think students with students as compared to, I'm not going to help you because that might, you know, drop my class ranking. You know, especially when you have top students, you don't want them competing against each other, you want them, you know, working together with each other for their benefit as well as for, you know, the whole school community. So thank you for bringing this to us.
My pleasure, Mr. President.
Now I'd like to call the special voting meeting to order. First, the...
Pledge, please.
Oh, pledge, that's right. The pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Business functions, Mr. Stopp.
I move that the Board of School Directors ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the Exeter Township Education Support Professionals and Exeter Township School District, July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2016. Attachment I, A.
I have a motion and a second discussion, please. I know you're 20 minutes early for a...
What happened when you retired, you got nothing else to...
Any discussion whatsoever. If there is no discussion, all in favor, please indicate.
Is the budget, the preliminary budget that's printed out, does that consider all the numbers that are in?
Yes, it does.
Okay, all right.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We look forward to continuing our great relationship with the unions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes business function.
Thank you, sir. Student functions, Mr. Cusack.
I move that the following trip, which is beyond the system, either USB approved the senior high corral music students freelance to Chambersburg area high school, February 13th and 14th.
Through coral.
1315, yeah, to attend the region course festival.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I've been to Chambersburg a number of times, it has never been classified as a trip.
I'm wondering now if this is a new event.
This comes off...
I do not believe so.
Well, you qualify...
Have they done this before? I believe they have.
I didn't hear the question.
The coral, the coral trip with Amanda and the three...
This is students who are selected for district courses, re-auditioned district courses, and a certain percentage of them go onto regional. We have three students who qualified for the regional course. Two of them first in their voice parts, which means they probably have a very good shot at qualifying for state courses.
But we usually have somebody who goes.
Last year we had one.
Yeah.
Yeah, this year we had three.
All right. Thank you very much.
It may be a different...
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the trip as cited, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. As an example, I have considered the MFR support unit. Would you like to come forward and sign this so you can leave instead of...
Yeah, we will.
What's that?
This was a long and arduous negotiation, and we appreciate your work, thank you. And now I'm signing it, that makes it official. Do I have a motion to adjourn the business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
The business meeting is adjourned, we will now start the workshop. See, we'll have two sets of minutes for approval. Is there anyone that knows of any changes we have to make before next week? Hearing nothing, Mr. Stopp, business functions.
For the voting meeting, we will be, in the letter A, we'll be reviewing and accepting the Exeter Township tax collector's audit prepared by Russell Fitzleisher, LLP for the period ending 12/31/2002, and they're attachments. I know the one thing that people already mentioned is there's a finding in there for segregation of duties, again, keep in mind that Charlie runs a one-person shop, so this is consistent with that and the Saint Lawrence report. This is something that we deal with on every audit report. And then, Anne, did you say that this particular auditor approval is up, the top track is up?
The three-year term for the audit services, the last year was the 2012, so I will ask for proposals from local audit firms, including rental, for another, what it was called, for another three-year term. Pretty informal, it's a smaller audit. I'll bring that back to the board.
So if you have an opportunity, if you haven't, to go through that, if you have any specific questions for next week, under letter B, we'll be voting on the DCIU service budget for the 2014-2015 year. It's a million and seven plus, reflects a zero increase in member district payments over 2013-2014, and our share is projected to be at $47,189.67. We will be reviewing the preliminary budget, which we've already seen a few times. We will be voting on that and authorizing the submittal to the Department of Education. That's in letter C. And then also, too, under D, we'll be authorizing the school district to file with the Department of Education for the exceptions to allow the tax increases over the index as authorized in the 2006 Taxpayer Relief Act and then by Act 25, 2011. And again, just to reemphasize that this does not mean that we are taking exceptions or we are going to a certain amount for taxes. This is just giving us the option that if we would, as we get down the road, we're just keeping our options open. That does not mean we are taking them. We are going through the budget process. Again, we had our first budget meeting last night, and we will be having additional budget meetings the day before this workshop for the next three months. So keep an eye on the calendar if you would like to come out and check those out.
Anne, are there any exceptions that we could take last year that we cannot take this year?
Yes, we were approved for a special education exception and a construction... Yes, we were approved for a special education exception and a construction, uh, debt-related exception, uh, we took a portion, and there was, we also qualified for pension exception, we took a portion of the special education exception this current year.
So, now it's just?
Now, it's just the retirement.
Just, just the pieces?
Pension, retirement, it's really referred to as the retirement exception.
Okay. So, if we would, I just have to ask, not good, so if we would consider doing a bus farm, uh, as we're, you know, as we're talking about, then we could not use that as an exception next year, or, or we're how?
No, but the, um, the construction exceptions, the one that's still remaining relates to debt that would have been incurred prior to, uh, June, I think the exact date, two thousand and six, when Act One went into place.
Oh, okay.
So, it wouldn't qualify, would qualify at all.
Under letter E, we'll, we will be voting on four of our employees in the procurement card program, uh, giving them the ability for textbooks, for elementary libraries, um, with a limit up to five hundred dollars per person. And lastly, um, the budget transfer is an amount of four thousand, four hundred and three dollars, that's an attachment five F, Melia.
Would you, any questions on any of those topics?
Um, these, um, four people are, are, from what schools are they from? For the ebooks?
The elementary, well, Tato fours and five sixes.
Oh, okay, it's elementary, oh, I remember, okay, I was just. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stock, Dr. Bender.
Uh, under personnel, we have, uh, Part A, uh, retirement of six certified teachers, uh, many have served the district for quite a few years. Uh, B, appointments, appointments of, uh, certificated staff, number one, number two is substitute teachers, both certificated and guest teachers, uh, number three, support staff, and number four, we have a list of, in the attachment, of the spring coaching staff. Uh, letters C, we have levers of absence for certificated staff and support staff. Part D, a change of status for a support staff member. And Part E, staff conferences, number one through nine. And that's it for personnel, unless there are any questions?
Yes, I have a question concerning, um, the substitute teachers. Is it possible that we would be able to find out what kind of, um, educational, what kind of degrees these, these, um, supposedly guest teachers have?
Sure. Let's add that to their names.
Thank you.
That concludes personnel.
Thank you. To what end does that serve?
Uh, the end serves that we are, we, we are people that are working with our children, and I think we need to know, uh, whether they work one day or two days or five days, uh, or twenty days, I guess they can work up to twenty days, can't they?
In one, in one assignment.
Yes. That, um, you know, what background do they have to, to, um, you know, be called?
I don't think that has any, uh, bearing on what substitute position they would fill. I think our substitutes are called as a whole, and it has, it's irrelevant, really, and it represents additional time that our people have to spend getting basically useless information.
Have they all have bachelor's degrees?
Well, I know, they have bachelor's degree, but.
They also, they all have education.
Then you have master's degrees.
Well, they are on emergency certificates, they are not on.
No, they are not. No, the guest teachers are on emergency.
Yes, that's not talking about.
Well, then, what does that have to do with anything either? They are certificated, therefore, are we going to deny them the opportunity to serve because they're, uh, a guest teacher?
They are not certificated.
They are, oh, you just said they're on an emergency certificate, correct?
Emergency.
Emergency.
Now.
By the state of Pennsylvania, they are qualified to teach in these circumstances, and I don't see any reason why we have to investigate it any further.
Um, I don't even understand why we even need emergency certificates these days. There are so many teachers out there that don't have jobs.
So, I would like you to research and tell me how many unemployed teachers there are in the state by next week, thank you.
No, I'm not going to research that, but I.
Well, that's, that's interesting, I think that's appropriate, I, I mean, how can you say whether they're emergency or not?
But, just for clarification, Dr. Webber, they are vetted through normal hiring process that anybody would go through?
Uh, the IU does that for us, and then we have the option, and I'm actually part of the interview team at the IU. We have the option. It goes and, and helps interview, and, um, uh, you know, they have been interviewed, their, all their credentials have been checked out, their reference, the IU does all that, and we pay for that service to the IU. Um, and then, of course, they, they get here and if, and they sign in, and if there's any difficulty, we will.
I just, I don't know how a process works, I was just trying to understand.
And just to clarify, they, a guest teacher is not called until the full, the fully certificated teachers has been exhausted, is that my understanding?
That we can, uh, change the amount of time before it will go out, too. So, it goes to one. I mean, the object is to get them all filled as quickly as possible, so we do change the amount of time that is visible to, to certain teachers.
I agree. The other, the other thing, just for clarification, and I'm not sure that I'm still correct on this, because I remember back a decade ago when I was a principal, more than a decade ago now, um, for certificated teachers that would come into my building, many times, they were assigned to a position outside of the area where.
Absoluted.
And I had assigned for them to get an emergency certificate for a day.
If they were technically on an emergency day-to-day, locally issued, it was called at the time.
Right, right, and I used to do that, so a lot of times, although our certificated teachers do have a teaching certificate, a lot of times, they get placed on an emergency certificate for days, like, if I needed an art teacher, my art teacher was out, I couldn't get an art certified person, so I'd have an elementary certified person come in and teach art, and technically, that's an emergency certificate.
Right.
Because that person is not qualified to teach art, is the standard.
It's called a locally issued emergency, under the direction of the superintendent.
So, I, so I mean, that, you know, sometimes they, these certificated people are also on emergency certificate, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I also think it's very important to note that we need to fill, we need to fill these positions, we need to have substitutes for every absence. Uh, it's extremely, it's been my personal experience that when you cannot fill a position and you need to just fill in and do the best that you can, it's extremely disruptive to the, to the day within that school building, and it's disruptive to the teaching cycle. So, it's important for us to have enough resources to fill every absence with a, with a substitute teacher.
Okay, we're gonna, we spend more time on this than deserves, uh, what we're doing. Uh, Mr. Cusick.
Um, I'd have made the list of field trips within the sixty mile radius that you don't have to go, just to be aware of, and they're, actually, this time around, I mean, there's sixteen of them, and they're really interesting, just a lot, and, you know, a lot of things went on, I think they're doing really well, but I hope they can do up to walk around. Anyhow, item B, um, uh, we'll be moving the school calendar to the next, to the voting meeting, unless we decide tonight and I have to do that. Do you wanna?
At least no days.
Well, yeah, I think this is, this is.
We don't want to overreact because of the one-year, hopefully anomaly.
There's now thirty-six days, any?
That's right.
Well, um, do you wanna, do you wanna comment on this now?
Yeah, this is, this is a different issue, related to the current calendar, but it, it could actually, next year's calendar, uh, we, and to answer the question, I think you just asked that, we typically put four snow days in, and we've done it a variety of different ways, we put them all at the end, we put them into, uh, the week before Easter, all four of them, and, uh, two years ago, the board asked me to split them two in April, or whenever Easter would fall, and then two at, at the end of the year, so that's how we have it now. There's no right or wrong way to do it, and there's no good or bad way to do it, you know, you could have a, a year where you use no snow days, you could have a year where, I don't, is it say this, you use ten snow days, or, I, I went through a year back in the nineties where we used fourteen snow days.
Yeah.
Um, that was ugly. But, any, anyway, those, it's usually rare that we have none, and it's usually rare that we have more than four, so that's why we put in four, because we typically have four or less. This year, it has not worked out that way. So, relative to this year's calendar, we need to look at the fact that our school year was supposed to end on June fifth, graduation was June sixth, now we have a situation where our school year, dare I say, is ending on June twelfth, possibly later. Uh, and the students are still graduating on June fifth, sixth, excuse me, so, um, a lot of schools are looking at the disparity between when our graduation exercises were scheduled and when the end of school is now, because of the adjustments in the calendar due to the snow makeup days. Um, I, we, I did ask Phil to look into the availability of the Santander facility, um, I'll never get used to saying that, I don't think, and actually, there, there are some additional days in June that the facility is available, should we wish to change it, but we also have a situation where we have, uh, a lot of families who have relatives, grandparents, whatever, who have booked flights specific for the graduation to occur on the sixth, and we also have a whole lot of teenagers that probably have booked trips the week after, and if we move graduation to the week after, we'll have a lot of kids losing money and losing opportunities to go away for their Easter, or the Easter, not Easter, uh, graduation week, um, fun in the sun. So, you know, there are a lot of things to consider, and, um, you know, is, is it worth being in graduation? We do have the ability to do that, uh, with little or no financial penalty, and, um, we actually have the next Friday that is available, the thirteenth, or Sunday, the fifteenth, and then the other days are later in June, which I wouldn't recommend, but, um, whatever, whatever the board thinks, but be aware that if we move it, I think you will probably have some appeals by students or their parents.
Well, if you just, so now we're up to, we're gonna be Wednesday of the.
Thursday.
Thursday. So, why, it seems that if we have any more days at this point, well, we can't, you know, if we have one more day, it'd end up being on the Friday, and, and it would be a reasonable idea to move, if we could, to move commencement to Friday, bec, and if we tell people now in February, I think we would probably hit a lot of folks that had, I mean, extensive reservations, I could be wrong.
But you'd hit, you'd hit some who have, and, you know, if they have non-refundable deposits.
Right, but if we have, okay, let's, let's suppose.
They're not gonna be happy.
Right, let's suppose that we have to actually go until Friday, but we've had commencement the week before.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's the same problem, we, and the students are definitely not gonna stay, have commencement.
No, no.
So.
No, you can make on that.
Yes, so, uh, I'm not sure that, well, you're right, it's, it's a chicken egg, but unfortunately, the calendar changes every year, so we have this dilemma every year.
Well, we, there's another consideration we're concerned about, uh, you know, reservations and that sort of thing, we lose the money if those two are not attended.
That's exactly.
So, it, to me, is fiscally responsible, and we have a responsibility, so if those kids get a hundred and eighty days, I would suggest voting a day.
Commencement to the.
There's no sense cheating the entire township out of four or five days' worth of tuition for their students, so that they don't miss their reservation, I'm sorry, doesn't, doesn't apply.
Do you wanna do a straw poll, do you want, do you want, uh, A, the, send them as a board at this point, I mean, it's not a voting issue, so.
Yeah, right, I was just gonna say that, you'll vote next week, so you have some time to think about it, and I just wanted to, you know, I don't, I don't have.
I wouldn't prefer it.
I, I just wanted to make the board aware of some of the pitfalls of changing it, but there is availability that can change it.
But we wouldn't be voting on, this is sort of voting on.
You have to vote.
I guess we have to all on the counter.
Yeah, I guess we gotta change the counter.
Yeah. So, um, but on the other hand.
First?
It's one day long.
So, you wanna leave this at the, alright, we have to decide then if we wanna pick a straw poll around, or wait till next week to make that, make the decision.
Mr. Cusick?
Two students in the audience.
We'll have a question.
Anyone who is, I see you show hands, I'm leaning toward extending the school year to, uh, allow us.
Jim, Jim's been dry.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just had a, a question, was if there are any days that are currently built into our calendar that we didn't view as potential snow days, that we could just basically say, "We're now declaring snow days," so we can possibly alleviate some of the pressure at the end of the schedule?
But, yeah.
I know we're too close to precedence there, but are there other days?
Not enough, yeah.
Somewhere in there that we could try to buffer?
Right, well, there's, there is the Monday after Easter, which is a possibility.
We can take that easily, I think we have to look at that.
And the Friday before Easter.
And the Friday before Easter.
That's very testing.
Yeah.
Good Friday is very testing, but I think the Monday after Easter is pretty much possible.
Memorial Day?
Well, Memorial Day's not a good day, I wouldn't touch that one.
No.
But what about the?
Well, I'm telling you, these are the.
But, do any of our early dismissals count against us?
No.
Once we do a half day, it's a full day?
Exactly.
Okay.
And you can't get two days in one day.
I just didn't know Thursday, half and half.
Saturdays.
Saturdays could be an option for our seniors.
And, and also, there are some rumors, and I, and I think they're just rumors, unless someone else knows something I don't know, about, um, the state approving less than a hundred and eighty days this year, be, uh, you know, pretty much forgiving the other days. So, I mean, that's, you know, if that were to happen.
I don't think it's a rumor, I mean, I think that conversation is going to happen quite.
Yeah.
That was officially distributed in different Easttown where I live, that, um, the state approved, I believe it, it's a hundred and seventy-nine student days, they're counting one in-service day towards the one eighty.
Yeah, an eighty day, yeah. Yeah, and we could do that, that'll probably buy us one day, right, Don, Don was looking into that for us, so we could probably buy one day.
So, that takes us from Thursday to Wednesday after.
Right.
That's still, we're still three days.
So, that's three days.
That's right.
This weekend, this week.
Yeah, I agree.
We're already on Friday, so don't worry about it, alright.
Well, maybe we have to cancel Friday and make it Thursday.
Why don't you say if the snowstorm can come twice for us?
Why aren't we on Friday?
And after this.
Because it's a, a teacher, uh, training.
By next, by next week, by next week, we'll have a better idea of exactly how many days.
We don't have all the teachers in.
In the event that, uh, we should need to extend it, is the feeling of course generally, we would look at that fairly. Anybody objecting?
I personally would prefer to keep it as a date that I understand that we can and can't, I think at this point in time, that once that calendar's posted, that there have been a lot of plans made to meet that specific date, so I think that we need to do what we can to try to maintain that date.
Yeah.
But, since we're not.
Yeah, I don't think we're.
Can you make that call?
Not yet, Joe, I was hoping you could pour it for me.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll, we'll move this conversation to next week, and, uh, and we'll also move the, um, approval of next year's calendar to next week, and, uh, if you, has anybody? Jim, you want to?
Mr. David.
Jim, you were, Mr. K.
What?
I know you are. Um, you were, you were wanting to look at this a little further to see if there was something for next year that caught your eye.
Nothing's catching my eye right now, because right now I'm looking for another week of snow days in this year, so. I, I would move, I would just move, just, I would move your commencement next year to the 13th, but scheduled to the 6th, or the 12th instead of the 5th, just to get around if that's what you're looking at, commencement next year is the 5th.
Yes, it is.
I would move it to 12th, that way you have 12, 12, you can get out a couple of days earlier than commencement, and that would be getting a couple of days.
Did you hear that, Mr. Kane? Next year's scheduled graduation a week later, so we have a buffer in case of additional snow days.
I'm fine with that. If we don't have the snow days, do we graduate early?
No.
No.
Well, put this way, the students are finished, they just have to show up for commencement to get their diplomas.
Yeah.
As opposed to showing up for school after they graduate.
Yeah, we're essentially repartaining this until next week, so, uh.
Yes, could, could you provide us this year's calendars next week?
Oh, sure, it's, it's, it's identical to next year's calendar, it's just, you know, yeah, sure.
I would be remiss if I didn't say that I'd really like to see next year starting after Labor Day, but.
Hey, you weren't here and I said it for it. I still think if this works toward the year-round school calendar, the closer you do this.
Are there any other items we need to consider before we call Mr. Flam for? I have distributed to those in the audience, a, since January is school board recognition month, uh, we've received certificates for each board member and we are recognized. Suitable for framing.
Definitely.
And it right there.
Goes on the fridge.
I'm looking to buy a frame that would match the quality of the certificate.
I know.
Tom, can I make a comment real quick before we go?
Certainly, I have control of this meeting all night.
Just, just, just one comment, yeah, and that is that, I, I would hope, I really believe that this conversation about class rank has merit and I think that we need to somehow find a forum where we can continue that conversation and continue to investigate that. I really do believe that there's a great deal of reason to what Tom said and, you know, Brian, that he brought it forward.
As I said, we've been treading around it and we'll maybe remedy the policy.
Do you want to, do you want to go through student functions and then everybody comes to each conference? That's the most likely place.
Why don't we do it that way? Carol, can you take that?
But then, Tom is not part of student.
It doesn't matter. The board is, the board is responsible.
Actually, the students can come and maybe we can have a conversation at the high school with the students to get some sense of where they are.
Could we, could we schedule a student functions meeting where it was open to the student body?
There is a student forum, um, this Friday to meet.
Friday?
This Friday to meet.
Okay, I'm about to put you down. Mr. Kane, for the student forum, or Mr. McFarland, do you have an agenda already for student forums to meet?
Yeah, I've got one, I've got one.
Yeah, can we put this on as a discussion item and can you, could you give early notice of what it's going to be so that the students can come with some ideas about how they think it would work well and kindly to their interests?
Is this being again?
Oh, the, um, class rank.
Yeah, I already, I already put it on my notes.
Okay.
To look at and to invite Mr. Dolan's partners.
Okay, and then we'll probably make it as, we can invite as many students as want to come from student forum. You can make it open to the school, if you want to.
Pardon me?
We can, you can invite as many, I'll make the meeting after you have students, your students meeting.
We always invite the entire student forum to the evening meeting with the board.
Right, but you can make it open to other students if they wish to come.
Oh, okay.
Right. So we'll send the meeting next week. How about that? Because I can't think of anything to make this up.
Eric, please.
I've read a couple of articles recently promoting the need to simplify, clarify, and prioritize, uh, pursuing initiatives and creating change. And I think that's what John and I have really tried to do over the last several years, both of our students and with our faculty. And with that in mind, you'll see that four of the bolted items at the top are the areas of focus are consistently what has been there for the last several years. Library design, content assessments, content literacy, engagement strategies, annual VAAS and anti-bullying. Obviously, preparing for PSA Keystone is an annual event for us as well. New this year, we're piloting inquiry-based math instruction. The teachers took a look at the Pernady program, they piloted one unit, they also went to visit Outscore between valley schools to take a look at college prep math as well as connected and are continuing to take a look at the three programs in an effort to decide on the direction that we want to do next year. I think we've made progress with that. I'm very pleased with the effort our teachers have made in piloting as well as in talking with their peers in other districts and trying to make a good, solid decision in terms of math instruction. The three programs that we looked at have items that are consistent, they have a spiraling approach, which, uh, concepts are brought back continually to the students, they have a social learning component where students are working collaboratively, and they focus on the weight math practices that are so important for students. So we're continuing through the spring to look at these programs with a regular junior high and the senior high, and we're trying to make it as, uh, as quickly as possible. We also are implementing the learning-focused collaborative meetings with our teachers and these have been very successful. Our teachers have tried to, kind of kill two birds with one stone, if you will, taking some of our initiatives and blending the learning-focused meetings, bringing apprenticeship strategies, student engagement strategies in particular, working with the commission, quite a bit of success. As far as news, our climate at the junior high continues to be very positive. John and I have been using the teacher effectiveness model and I feel as though I can pretty much, going back to what Bill said last month, in terms of, it is time-consuming, it's a time-consuming approach, but we feel that it's been very productive in our conversations that we've had with teachers, particularly focusing on the rubric and speaking the common language. And I think it, it helps us to, to do a more comprehensive observation than we've done in the past, as opposed to just going in and looking at that one muscle, or thinking looking across the board, the rubric, the four domains, and I think our conversations have been more effective. Um, we did very well with our school performance profile in 7.9, we're looking to improve that again this year. Again, we piloted the three math programs, we're looking at those. Our Olvea speaker in our meeting, Bob Lentz came in, a great speaker in the fall, came in and got our students really focused and fired up about our Olvea's initiative. And, again, our SAP team and our Olvea's core committee have done a great job with the social, emotional aspect of learning with our kids. And we feel that that's very important, obviously, at the middle level and those two groups have done a very nice job. 27 junior high musicians earn spots in the junior high county musical groups, nine chorus, six band, twelve orchestra, music programs remain extremely strong. I note here that MathCouts participation increased to 15 students this year and I did that because last year, we were really down. We only had a couple of students participating last year, it was concerning to us, and at that time I felt it was just a kind of a one-year setback for us, if you will. This year, outstanding participation, 15 kids out of the team, 12 can compete, and just recently we learned that our team finished in the top five in the county and four of our participants finished in the top 25. So, we were very pleased with Mrs. Topper, her group, the girls. Last year, Gretchen Hess earned a funding school grant and has used that grant very wisely to rebuild our entire junior high garden behind the school, did a great job with purchasing traditional equipment to promote that. We received, uh, quite a bit of money from community businesses in supporting our efforts as well. So, we feel that we have a great year and trying to be as consistent as possible, trying to prioritize and simplify for our students and our teachers and I think our teachers are appreciative of that and I think they're able to focus on best instructional practice.
I'm pretty concerned about your use of the word backward design. It seems back. No, Eric, I was just, and I, and I don't know whether we do this already or not, but I was reading an article and, along with these meetings, these learning-focused meetings that you're having where teachers get to share ideas, this particular school was using a, was using Google Docs as a venue for people to share really outstanding lesson plans that they found had worked really well. And, and I, I think that if you're not doing that, maybe it's something that we can encourage folks to do. I think it adds to that flavor of collaboration besides just the meeting.
You're probably right. It is a tool for collaboration and a number of our teachers have been trained on Google Docs.
I've been involved with MathCouts probably since, oh, gosh, 2001, 2002, Marshall County. Last year was disappointing not to see a very active team, this year it was great to see our names on the papers as I was grading. You know, basically grading is one of those things where pretty much impartial, getting whatever's there is there, but just seeing the students come through and then seeing, you're looking at the other schools passing by and saying, you know, it doesn't have to be the tops, but it's nice to see that we were very competitive and it looked like our students were performing. And number one was more of the fact that we had students interested in participating, that was the top thing.
I, I agree with you. It was, it was troubling to us last year, we talked about that, and it was out of the ordinary for us because we've always had very strong participation and have done very well in that regard. So, it was, it was a little concerning to us last year, but I did feel that it was just a one-year, uh, event for us and I was going to see participation increase. And it wasn't for lack of effort last year, believe me. You know, we were, we were feeding the bushes, trying to get kids out to participate last year for whatever reason, we didn't come through that, but you can see this was back in this year.
Eric, with your anti-bullying program, has that cut down on, you know, conflicts between students? And do you have any reference on that as far as last year could go this year or whatever?
I, I think initially, and John can probably speak to this better than I can, but I think initially we actually saw a rise in that because there were so many reports coming in that weren't coming in previously. But I think this year in particular, we're seeing decline in events and I, I will tell you this, it has given John and I a vehicle to talk to parents, to talk to our students, and, uh, I don't know that we're going to extinguish bullying. What we're doing is trying to build empathy skills with our students so that when they do see a bullying event, they can approach it in an appropriate way and teaching them the skills that are necessary to empathize with their peers and to help themselves in bullying. I think we've seen a decrease, particularly in cyberbullying. John, please chime in.
Yeah, absolutely. The number of cyberbullying in the social media, our, our kids get hit up in seventh grade during their Olvea meetings, eighth grade during the Olvea meetings, we had a guest speaker come in every year for the last six years, most of them talk specifically to that cyberbullying, so, uh, we, we hit them very hard with that. But as Eric pointed out earlier, the numbers, it is, it's, it's kind of difficult because we're teaching them to report, so you're gonna get more reported, although, you know, I think in the years past, numbers have definitely picked lines since we first started the program.
What sort of a process does a report of bullying kickoff? What occurs when you get a report?
Well, students are taught to go directly to the nearest adult, to a teacher, that teacher is gonna contact a guidance counselor, so contact John or me, could kick off the SAP process, and certainly if it is found to be a bullying situation, it's certainly gonna kick off the disciplinary process and, uh, in the event of something severe, uh, we would take further measures then. So, it's really just reporting, getting these, getting the information to an adult so that we can.
Is the SAP process, is that for family to be involved, is that?
Right.
Have the police ever involved in this?
I don't know if the police were ever involved in a, in a, in the initial stages, but certainly if it were to get to another level, yes.
I was just wondering how you are made aware of the cyberbullying or do you?
Parents often times will come in and either call me or they'll, they'll come in with hard copies of an exchange that took place over the internet, where now text phones, you know, texting on cell phones.
Or the brain cell.
So, how did the parents know about the bullying?
Often times their, their child will reach a boiling point with, where they'll tell their parents and say, you know, I'm really sick and tired of this kid harassing me and, uh, you know, that parent often times will call one of us and provide us with the hard cops.
So you talk, you talk to the parents when school starts at the beginning of the year, is that how they're aware of this change? I'm thinking about the kids that are coming from sixth grade into this school.
Yeah, when the seventh graders commute for orientation, Eric and I meet, speak with them, and I address that with all, all the parents. Talk about our Olvea's program, what it is, what we do, how often we meet, and how it's really been a big part of our educational process. We talk about the importance of reading, writing, arithmetic, but we want good sessions coming out of our building and the whole aspect is very critical for us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
I have only one other thing. I will be forwarding to you this evening, two emails, uh, from the, generated by the township. They give all the comments made in their strategic planning by the citizenry, telling everybody what they liked about Exeter Township, what they don't like and what they want to see happen. Then the second email will contain the supervisors' responses to those particular questions. As is norm, as is the norm, the average resident sort of blurs the distinction between the school district and the township, and so we've still got them confused and it might be interesting reading for you all. So, uh, there, if there's nothing else to be covered, this meeting is adjourned. I would like a five-minute executive session concerning personnel, please.